Dave, call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Gary Veranger, here.
Paul Kuning, here.
Joe Monti, yes.
Absent.
Robert Laraway, here. Brent Peavy, here. Cheryl Shannon, here. Dave Tergerson, here.
For you is the agenda. An additional item, it's an updated agenda, item number six. That's the only thing that's different. Are there any questions about the agenda? Seeing none, understand this, accepted unanimous consent. We also have the consent agenda. Any questions about the consent agenda, anything to be taken out and discussed? Seeing that there isn't, Cheryl entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion made by Laraway, seconded by Peavy.
Oh, what is it?
I was gonna say, yeah, Tim, this guy, to accept the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Reports. We have with us today, a few people that at the end of the reports will introduce themselves, welcome. And speak for a few minutes to us. They're running for candidates for county and state township office. Also, I'd like to revisit the wall of fame, the wall of honor, I guess it's called, with the fame. We used to have, Tim, didn't we, used to have a committee?
We originally did, yes.
Originally. I would like us to consider possibly doing that again. Since Paul and I are the oldest serving members on the council. It's been quite a turnover, so it might be good to have some people on that committee to think of those kinds of things for the future. Alright, that's it for me. Mr. Mannin.
Good evening, folks. You have a report in writing in your packet, just to highlight a few things. We have finished up the meat and potatoes of the Clubhouse Resurfacing Project. We milled Friday, did a little bit on Saturday, touch up some spots, came in yesterday. Paved one lane, we did some touch up paving at some spots, they got a little bit gouged out with the mill, and then finished that up today. Next step in the process is, we've got the striping scheduled. I'm gonna meet tomorrow with a landscaper to look at doing the retaining wall at Fairway Drive and Clubhouse. So right now, we have some boulders there to kind of delineate where you can and can't park. And we put in the project to do more of a landscape feature at that intersection, just kind of dress it up a little bit more, since it is kind of one of the main focal points in the village. And then also, we'll can see what areas we might have to do some shoulder work on yet. But we got the grant portion of the project done within the deadline required by MDOTs, as they are a October 1 fiscal year, so we got our, the paving portion that was halfway covered by MDOT, done, so we can finish that up with them, soon as we get a bill from Central Asphalt. But all the project went really well so far. I'm pleased with how the street looks. Would have been a little nicer if we had a cooler day, so the asphalt would have set up a little bit firmer and quicker, but you know, it is what it is to have eighty-five degrees in the middle of September at this point in time. I believe we've come up with a workable solution to our fireworks dilemma problem. If we are to, or were to cap the shell size at six inches for our show, we believe we have an area on the dam that will still provide us with the necessary seventy feet for one inch ratio of space. There's about an eighty foot wide section up on the dam that would be able to do sixes from, though we should come down with fives and fours to do a still same sized shell. In the past, we had capped out at eight inch shells, and realistically, I don't think most people can tell the difference between a six or an eight, and cost wise, you know, an eight inch shell, you're two, two fifty a shell, or you can get six, or nine, six cells for three fifty. So I mean, it's a cost saving, so hopefully we'll be able to continue to do a good quality show. And I think we found a safe solution at this point in time, not that one. We have a couple of case where we are, I think, at the finish line of needing to go for a formal hearing with at least two, maybe three incidents. One is a continual visual animal control problem on Cortez Drive. We've issued three civil tractions to them, one was dog license, one two at large, but continue to see comments online of these dogs, you know, roaming free. You know, so if we find that again, I think we need to take it and go for a formal hearing and request the owner to surrender the dogs, because they're clearly a nuisance at this point in time. Another one is a home on Sequoia that we have ticketed for blight on at least two occasions so far, that does not seem to be having any impact whatsoever on what is happening at that property. Formal hearing is a process where we would involve our attorney at that point in time, so making sure that you guys are comfortable with going to that stuff, and not having to come back for any type of additional authorization to do that. Perfect. Next week is our audit field work. You're always invited and welcome to come in, speak with our auditors at any time. We are seeing continued new home developments, got one that we need to finish proving today. We've had like three others in the last week called that they're, you know, somewhere in that process. Today was, or yesterday was tax day. We're actually still processing payments that came in yesterday. There will be none without any interest or penalty, but we are probably ahead, I think, of where we have been historically. Typically, we've reported out at the end of the month where we're at, and just looking at last year's collection versus this year's, we're ahead on that pace in terms of the actual percentage of parcels of data on time. So that's an encouraging thing. On the die, if you have a copy of tomorrow's council government meeting agenda, it'll be the Commission on Aging, I believe. Yep, seven PM. We had an incident last week where staff responded to a gentleman in distress with a cardiac incident with one of our AED units. The gentleman is in the hospital, is our understanding, but both Mark and Jerry were able to respond well in advance of fire and rescue in the ambulance to that incident. We're about two weeks out of what I'm being told to have our painters here to do the touch up on the fascia and softening on the exterior of the building. They're pleased with the weather, they've been able to catch up on some of the exterior projects they've been working on, but that is still planned for this fall. And one last project to share with you, and it was a little off the books project that we worked on in the last month. But in case you were never one to poke around Google, none of our streets were on street view. So between last meeting and this meeting, we went, we acquired a three hundred and sixty degree camera, a pretty reasonable price off Amazon, and videoed the whole community. And have all the streets up on street view now, so you can pop into Google Street View anytime and take a peek and look, and see what's going on. This is a tremendously valuable tool when it comes to real estate, home shopping, you know, being able to shop the neighbors, all that kind of stuff. One of the other reasons why I wanted to get this done prior to where we're at today is, I wanted to videotape Clubhouse Drive prior to construction to document the condition before we went in and started to tear up stuff, in case there's any type of damage or, you know, that type of stuff. So the version of Clubhouse Drive that is currently on street view, we will take that and put up once we get it striped, now that we've repaved it. But, yeah, it was actually a pretty straightforward type of process. Google has never come out and done our community, but we did that ourselves, and you know, hopefully it'll prove to be a valuable tool as residents like to, you know, sell or move to the community.
Question about, you're still at your Google, just put it online?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole street view portal where you can upload your own videos, and you have to upload it with a GPS file, which is a GPS data for the file. And that's it. They process it, they put it up on the map, all themselves, they go through and block out all the license plates, all the bases, all that stuff, like you literally just have to record it and send it with a GPS file.
That's cool.
Yeah.
I have a question about striping. Are we gonna do El Camino when you do this? Or not?
Okay.
No? Okay.
May have to kind of flow it this way there.
Okay.
And that's it?
That's all I have, folks. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mannin. Mr. Gray, is here for Sherman Township Report.
I'll make it quick, since we have other people speaking. Last night's meeting, we've had some issues with Forest Hill Cemetery, some of the trees in the back there because of the storms and stuff like that, and dropping big land. Headstones, something like that, so we're gonna look at either trimming up or taking out some of those trees. Also, in Sherman Parks, we had a huge tree come down in the big windstorm, we just had like a week ago. So we're gonna have to cut that up and get that out of there too. So the other thing we talked about real quick is, we ended up taking a lot of the trees out in the cemetery, is probably bringing in somebody to look at and see about planting some new trees, using our other funds there. It does decorate up the cemetery, the trees that are there now are very big, very old. So I would assume we're gonna lose a lot of them, just from being it all in itself. Secondly, Denise had applied for, and we actually were granted an election grant agreement from the state, and that was for six thousand dollars. We're gonna use that money to pay for two more of the new election podiums that you can walk up to during Election Day and vote, or three of them, we can stand up, one of them for handicap. So we ordered one, apparently went over well in August, so we're gonna order two more that you'll probably see in November. For that part there. And then, Nato Sherman Fire Department had forty-eight calls last month, thirty-three of those were medical. So it seems like medical is starting to pick over more and more for their calls, more than just fire itself. That's it.
Right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gray? Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay, LIP away, reported. Is there, did they send anything over to you? Okay, this is the agenda item number six. Candidates running for state, county, township supervisor. Let's go on the order that you arrived.
I'm Patty Sandel. I'm running for county clerk, Isabella County. I am a lifer here at Isabella County, born and raised here. I grew up in Shepherd, inside the village of Shepherd. My parents still live there. My husband and I have three children and five grandchildren. I am currently the co-township clerk. I have been in that position for twelve years, so I'm familiar with governmental chart of accounts, budgets, and of course, elections. Although I don't know if anyone can familiarize themselves with elections these days, there's always so many changes going on. What my hope would be if I was elected was, would be to continue the agreement, hopefully with the early voting, with the consolidation of the townships if they're agreeable. I would hope we might be able to renegotiate the contract as far as maybe being less money for the townships, so that there's no administration costs if the county can, the clerk's office can take that on without any extra stipends. That would be one goal of mine. But I feel like I would be a good fit. My husband and I have a small business. It's a business my parents started, so I had a retail experience, which for almost thirty-nine years. And so I know a lot about customer service, and I really think that I'm a people person and a problem solver. And so I hope they'll consider me when November comes around. Many of you have any questions?
What was your maiden name?
Zet.
That's it, okay.
I'm married to a cunor.
Oh, okay. Shepherd area. Thank you.
Yeah.
Believe you were next.
Oh, I am not running.
Are you sure? No, but please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tim Odiker. I live in Mount Pleasant. I am running for the Michigan House of Representatives, the ninety-second district. The ninety-second district is all the communities within Isabella County and five townships in Grashen County. So pretty much it is from St. Louis, Alma, down to Ithaca. As you go down one twenty-seven, all that you see on each side is pretty much the five townships of Isabella, of the ninety-second district. We're doing the circuit together, people. I have been on the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education for sixteen years. Many of those years as president or vice president. I have been a member of the Chippewa Watershed Conservancy for twenty-one years, and I recently stepped off that board. Doing those two roles, I've learned a lot about our community, and I've learned to how to communicate and talk to our community, and I mean the community as in everyone. In the school district, we have to relate with everyone in the district and look and learn what their issues are. Listen to them, ask questions, get facts, and make decisions. I want to take that skill set to the state legislature. I have practiced that a lot. COVID has learned us all on the challenges of listening to everybody, but it's fairly important in our community to do that. I'm skilled at that. I think I can take those skills to the state legislature and help them move forward. Our community has a lot of significant issues currently that I think we're not getting addressed properly or quickly by the state, and I would like to step in and be able to get those things to happen. I currently work at Central Michigan University in the College of Education, in the Trimmer Schools Office. I'm the Associate Director of University Relations. My function is to bring K-12 and post-secondary higher ed closer together and show students that it is a powerful opportunity for them, but also to show the resources that the university has to K-12 and make those connections and bridges. As you can tell, being on the school board for sixteen years, I've leveraged a lot of those skill sets and learned a lot about that space. However, being a part of the Conservancy, I've learned a lot about our environment, our community, and what's going on, and the environmental impact that's going on. Some of the key issues that I'm looking at are, Sheriff Mann has brought to my attention some of the issues with the current marijuana laws and the gaps that are there. There's been a lot of issues in our areas regarding that. I think we need to address the nineteen ninety-four change that we did in the tax system. I think there are, they, that promise of getting municipalities monies directly from the state has not worked well, and I think we need to readdress those issues. Ag business is another big area that I'm looking at. Is there ways that we can broaden out and develop new ways of providing crops for the current systems that we have in place? I'm a big advocate of getting your food from your table within a hundred miles of where you live, and I think we're in a very unique position to be able to leverage that and move that forward. We have water, rich lands, and resources to be able to do that. I think we just need to get some entrepreneurial supports to ironically model what's happening in Wise Township. I've visited the marijuana farms up there, not so much as marijuana as the crop, but the technologies that they're using to grow a tropical crop in Michigan has been highly successful. There are many models I saw, there's three different models that have been very successful, and I think that technology, that knowledge would be very beneficial for our ag business in our area. I grew up in Mount Pleasant. I lived big store to my parents. They lived in Mount Pleasant for many, many years. My wife works for Grashen Isabella R E S D. She is an early childhood special needs expert for zero to five-year-olds. I'm in her space that she does all of her services are here. All of, so she has families that she serves in these areas. And through her experiences, I learned a lot about systems that we need to put in place for our population, where the poverty levels are getting significantly increased for housing issues and mental health issues. Not only that, but I see a big gap in some issues with the population shifting, where we have many single elderly living in a home in our rural environments, and we need to develop better supports for them. So those are some of the ideas that I have moving forward. I have a law degree. I like policy. I like, ironically, I like coming to meetings like this. After sixteen years of being on the school board, I've learned a lot about creating policy and having policy impact. I think it's time, and I would like to take those skills to the state legislature. Does anyone have any questions?
You have a great first name, I will say that.
I agree. I agree. And I hope I'm as organized as you are, so.
I have one question. In the past, we've had some of our state representatives come in at least once a month, a couple of hours, and the local people can come in and meet with them, talk to them, ask questions, stuff like that. Our current person does not do that. I don't know why, but I would like to know if that's something that...
It is my goal. That's currently what I'm doing right now, so that is my goal. With the underlying context of, there are twenty-one townships in the ninety-second district. There are, what, seven municipalities, and not including school districts, and not including this organization. So we're in the high thirties, so not every time.
No.
But my goal is, I learn a lot by doing that. You learn what's going on. I was at Sherman last night, and we had a great conversation afterwards about what's going on with the sewer systems and everything in this community, and the issues that we're having. I view the role as a House of Representatives is to be that direct contact with the people and what's happening in our yards, in our backyards, and with our neighbors, and being able to support that. You know, there are others who are doing things on the presidential end, that's not my thing. I want to have impact here. I love this community, and I really want to help this community move forward. And ironically, this, the short time that I've been doing this, I've learned a lot that really needs to change. And so that is a great way to get information and to know what we need to be doing, it's like showing up at meetings like this, or reading minutes. Thank you very much for posting things on the internet. Does anyone else have any questions? Another question that people often ask, I am a Democrat. I'm running on a Democratic ticket. But I'm asking you to vote for me and what I have done, and what I can do for the state and our community. I'm not so much for one party or the other party. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not running for any office, but is this a public comment?
Public comment, yeah.
Thank you.
Could you have the name?
Yes, Lee, L E I G H, Clark, C L A R K B. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And everybody over there has already seen these. Like the traveling band, right? Okay.
Do you want to run for something?
Actually, I have considered it, but it really depends on how long we're gonna stay in this area. So I can't make a commitment right now. My name is Lee Clark, and I've been a resident of rural Isabella County for the past twenty years. I'm here tonight as a concerned Isabella County citizen, and also as a representative of backing our deputies, Isabella County. We are a citizen-led committee that is advocating for our sheriff's deputies and the passing of the proposal on the November fifth ballot. On November fifth, you will see the proposal for the Isabella County Sheriff's Office Road Patrol. This is for one point four five mils based upon your taxable value. Support of this millage ensures the continuation of reliable and responsive law enforcement services throughout Isabella County. It ensures the current status quo. Millage funds are earmarked specifically for the use of Isabella County Sheriff's deputies for things such as wages, training, fuel for vehicles, vehicle repairs, and other necessities. These funds cannot be accessed by the Board of Commissioners or any other county department for their use. Recently, I've thought about all of the reasons why people who I know have had to call nine-one-one over the years, and they include suspicious persons, theft, breaking and entering, elderly relatives who have held victims to scams, car accidents, domestic violence, and suicide attempts. Our deputies rush to our aid on our very worst of days. The loss of upwards of twenty-two sworn law enforcement officers who promptly and faithfully respond to these types of calls will be felt much further than the boundaries of our county. If the millage fails, and there are no more sheriff's deputies, the Michigan State Police will be dispatched to you. What you need to know is, as with all law enforcement agencies these days, the Michigan State Police is already stretched so thin. Currently, the Michigan State Police runs three troopers to cover four counties. If our deputy road patrol millage fails, and the Michigan State Police is forced to pick up over, excuse me, pick up over the sixteen thousand calls that the sheriff's office responds to on an annual basis, it will be five counties to cover. Three troopers covering five counties. This is not safe. Can you imagine needing to call nine-one-one for someone breaking into your home? Or perhaps hearing a domestic violence situation at the neighbor's? And you call nine-one-one to find out that the closest trooper is in Gladwin? This is not a scare tactic. This is honestly what we, as rural Isabella County residents, could be facing. Please note that the Isabella County Sheriff's Office is the only law enforcement agency to patrol and respond to emergencies twenty-four seven. Currently, the Michigan State Police shift ends at ten PM. The loss of our deputy road patrol will have economic ramifications for years to come. The lack of police coverage out in the county areas could affect people's decision on where to buy homes or open businesses. And if we lose our deputies, it will take nearly a decade to recover. Just ask Mount County. Mount County, who ended up passing, excuse me, who ended up passing a millage after they failed it, they're stuck. When the millage failed, all of their talent left. Now they cannot fill their vacancies. I'd like to give you an example of how much an Isabella County, an average Isabella County resident would end up paying on a new millage. For example, my husband and I own a modest twenty-two hundred square foot ranch, house on an acre with a pole barn. I'd say it's a pretty typical country setting. Our taxable value was eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. With this millage, our taxes would go up one hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents a year. That's ten dollars and eighty-one cents a month. That's the cheapest insurance policy you'll find on the market. I understand that no one wants to pay more for what they're currently getting. I get it. But we cannot afford to be without law enforcement in our rural areas. In closing, losing our deputy road patrol would be catastrophic to our community. I encourage you and the citizens of Lake Isabella to vote yes on the deputy road patrol on millage on November fifth. Please talk to your friends, family, and residents, so that they understand what is at stake. They value your opinion. The safety and security of our county depends on it. Thank you. I'd also just like to direct you to the Isabella County website. There is a treasure trove of information regarding the millage there. There's a full section on frequently asked questions. There's a tax calculator where you can put in your taxable value. It will tell you exactly how much your taxes could potentially go up. It's a great source for information. Also, we do run a Facebook page, it's called Friends of Isabella County, where we post factual and reliable information. Don't get your information from Towny Talk Two or any of those other group pages online. And if you do have questions, call a sheriff directly. I know he encourages that. Be happy to answer your questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you. And if you are interested, I do have some yards I have got in my car, which I can bring in after the meeting, so.
I have a question. Do you know how many deputies have currently left?
I know one. Well, because of what's...
Right.
Yes, one, absolutely for sure. He left because of the uncertainty of the millage proposal, but his home police agency offered him top weight. Police agency offered him top wages. And he just couldn't turn it, turn it down, so. Thank you. It is six years, so it is for a six-year millage. Um and currently, the sheriff's office is staffed at a level, same level as nineteen eighty-five.
This would continue the same level of.
Correct. It's not gonna be adding.
Right.
New people. It's to keep it going, just to keep what we have right now running. And it's um for the basics, to be, to be honest. There's not a lot of fluff.
And it's dedicated.
It is, yes. It is. Thank you.
Thank you.
How would someone get ahold of you to get a sign if they wanted?
Um my, probably my phone number is nine eight nine. Four hundred zero four three three. Or my email is. My first name, Lee, L E I G H, Lee Laker. I went to Grand Valley.
Plus on their Facebook page, you can.
Friends of Isabella County.
That was an online question.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Any other questions from online?
Yep, we have uh so it's Google Street View just on Clubhouse. Now we've done um all of the public streets in the village. We did have to reshoot Essex. And there's a little gap on Sequoia Lane. Um we did not do Torcito. Amazingly, Travy was already done by somebody else, but we didn't, we didn't do any of the private streets, um but all the public ones we have done. Channel Drive West, I guess we did. That's a little bit out there. Another comment, thank you for sharing details on the village.
Thank you.
Okay.
Public comment. Yeah, uh Kim Fox, six-six-one-three, West Little Turnaway. Uh just a couple of things. First of all, the streets are looking really nice. That's very, uh very good on that. Um but I had a question on these little story sheds that I noticed that they sat up in the lake and I'm not. Complaining about it because it does look very nice and I think it enhances the property. But I was wondering if, I I know this probably isn't the uh council to come to. But I was wondering, is there any idea for or any hope that us with just vacant lots could get one of those? And that what I was thinking of is just like you did the garages where there would be three or four different designs by. I don't know, a few different things, you know, different companies that could come in. And be able to put a storied shed on there because it enhances the property as far as I'm concerned, at least this one does. And it would be helpful for the uh people that just own property and that don't have a house at this time. To be able to store some stuff into their things. Of course, there could be no water, no electricity, but. Uh these things are very nice, the little sheds I'm seeing around and uh just wondered if there was any hope. Of that ever happening and if. If I want to continue this. Beyond this council, what should I do? Thank you.
Probably zoning.
Thank you, planning commission and zoning. And the planning commission, I believe. October the eighth, some stuff may perhaps is our next meeting day. The second to say about this stuff. Um we are planning to meet then, so. That would be the appropriate venue to take that soon.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other public comment? Hey. Seeing none, close public comments, we go to existing business. Dickens and Vicky.
That last month's meeting, you asked uh me to find some sample ordinances for you to review. Um there's half dozen or so in your packet along with information on other municipalities that allow it. I also included um draft language from when. Uh this issue was last uh run to Flagpole in up two thousand thirteen. Uh we had gotten as far as um some potential language to look at either in our animal control ordinance or zoning ordinance at the time. Um at that time, the council did not pursue um adoption. I don't think we got to a public hearing on that process, but. The information is in your packet. I'm really. Kind of waiting for whatever direction you guys set and. What if anything you'd like me to do and what if anything you'd like me to include or not include if you want me to write something for you guys to consider ordinance wise?
So I looked at the different ordinances. I found out that our proposed ordinance from two thousand twelve. Was uh. Pretty close. What everybody says, what were the big differences? Our ordinance is pretty spot on back then. We just didn't act.
Couple of the things from some of the other proposals in your, or plans. Um is there some, is there a cost to our permit or was there a?
I don't discuss all that, I don't.
I don't see anything here. Um length, if we, did they have to get a permit?
I don't think we were gonna allow, make it.
Permit?
Yeah, I mean, it's been over a decade, so.
Okay, so it doesn't matter. Okay, so. I guess those are questions. Do we want permits? Do we want a length and period? Some, some of these had one year, some had five. And then the cost of the permit was rel- relative to the number of years. Um infraction, are we going to have a fine? I noticed in many of these, it said that a copy of the permit needs to be available to show the police and code enforcement if asked. So that might be something, do we want that?
Questions have been brought up to me about uh. In our, in our. One we proposed twelve years ago. We had different numbers of chickens for non-waterfront parcels of fifteen thousand square feet and then. Non-waterfront parcels greater to or greater than was six, then went from four to six, but then waterfront parcels. That's the, that's the feat, that's the kickback waterfront. Because I don't think there's any place to put them. Where it's not going to improve on someone's yard. Can't be close to the water because you don't want sheds between you and the water. And then the other part is the street side, which is. Roadside or the front yard, so it shouldn't be in the front yard.
I, I would counter that by. Saying you are right for all of our waterfront lots in our traditionally the Lake Isabella preparation flats.
Okay.
But any of the coolie flats or the unplatted, you know, your two, three acre parcels.
Oh, you mean the un, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Oh.
Those are waterfront, but those are not what, you know, I I think fall into that rectangular platted lot box. That we we tend to default to when we think about this issue. Um there's certainly ample space on a lot of those where they could do it far away from the water and not near other neighboring properties. That was what they wanted to do. But for both waterfront, you are a percent correct.
Yeah. And. These people didn't want it in the front yard either.
Yeah.
They didn't want to go driving by and seeing it in the front yard.
That's all. I don't know how we'd get around that necessarily.
Chickens at all.
Yeah. Well, correct.
I've said, I've said my views on it in numerous meetings. I don't think we need to go down that road again, but. I just think it's gonna bring out a lot more headaches and. Lot more work than worth, lot more fighting.
Well, the one thing I did notice in one of these, and I forget, was Clinton Township or one of those two maybe was Charlotte. Only allowed ten permits per year.
Yes, that was the one of the questions.
Restricted the amount of people that could have.
Yeah. I'm curious why.
So they didn't have.
It's opening the door, but not opening wide.
Why? Yeah, so first cow, first chicken, right?
Kind of like the docking space.
Yeah.
Full of chicken day.
I don't know, do you wanna? What's the process? You gotta, we gotta go mailing and know people public hearing and people wanting to move forward. So if you were to do a zoning ordinance, you would need to have a. Uh planning commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation before you guys could act on it. Um if you're gonna get into the permit business on this. Uh zoning would not be the appropriate venue because that's gonna convey a vested right at that point in time in terms of.
Oh, yeah.
Property use, so I would steer you away from zoning. I would put it more as a police bar ordinance that would give you. The control to, you know, put the eggs back in the carton if you may, if they decide you don't want to make an omelet.
So it should go to the planning commission first, though, because.
That's.
I do, well, I mean. I don't think we, I don't, I don't see, if we were to pursue this, I don't see a document that's done.
Oh, no.
Well, when I'm talking about.
It might not be bad to have the planning commission take a look at it and figure out, you know, do we really want to do this?
I would highly recommend in the near future, we make a decision. Yeah.
Put it to the planning commission. I'd give them some kind of. Program.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know, just start the process over again.
Well, I'm.
They're gonna come back with, comes to questions, and I was the answer.
Are the, the chickens and the bees gonna be two separate items or is it gonna be like a kind of a husband?
I'm gonna include both of me in, under one ordinance. Mention them both.
They're both, I mean, they both kind of interact each other so far as it.
Right.
How we gonna split them up? If we consider one. Or we're gonna just keep them together?
Don't know.
Would think the rules would be somewhat different from chickens and bees.
And I would think the bees, like.
Well, the biggest.
There's a low interest. And it's like that. Um I mean, it's good for, for all areas.
The one, the one that seems to be the most divisive is uh. The poultry. More than.
Yeah, I guess it just depends on. How you wanna give our community.
I don't know, what do we want to do?
What would you think if you said bees, but only if you have two acres or more? That way.
Well, we did, we did wanna, we did talk about that acreage thing and. You're both.
Or maybe an acre or something like that, just to have a little bit more room so you're not.
Why, yeah, I think you have to, yeah, have a certain minimum. And I'm wondering if people who's in kids say yes. You know, if there was no criteria that you could tell if they're. You know, next door or when just have own a lot of property they want. Yeah, I just wonder if they're, if we're keeping them together or.
I, I'm at people like towards uh the chickens and. I guess. I'm probably leaning more towards um Brent than anything about, about having that ordinance in there. But. I do understand the necessity for bees. Because they're.
I.
They're important. So I don't know. I don't know what we want to do. We have to make some sort of decision.
Not having bees would not affect. The growth of anything. Right? I mean, it's not like we have to have bees to continue pollination out here. Or do we? I guess that's, I mean, are they just for fun or is it really purposely for pollination for grabs?
What I read seems more like this, but very small, obvious.
Okay. Yeah, so just growing honey.
Perhaps, yeah. And everything, and people who are in the hunting usually enjoy. Paul, where are you on this?
We should go away. I don't think people have really asked about the chickens and the bees. I mean, is there quite a few people that have come in?
Chickens, yes.
Chickens, yes.
Yeah.
Bees, not really that many.
Bees, we've had one that jumped out to me. But chickens, chickens, we, we have multiple people that are like, what's the update on the chicken? What's going on with chickens? It's like, when are you gonna get the chicken ordinance done? So, yeah, they're, they're certainly.
So they're all in favor of it?
They are in favor of it, yes. Yeah.
Because I get the other half to happen after that.
Sure.
Get the other half to.
Yeah, give coupons to the continuing fried chicken.
Yep.
Each move on together from there.
Yeah, we have, we have to make some decisions. So I would say, I would say, well, we have to tell Tim which, which parts we want. In the new one.
What about only one person's asked for me, why we? Say, yeah, I just don't see it.
To get in front of it.
Okay.
Yes.
So we don't have to. You know, do this whole thing again about bees.
Okay, so we do the bees thing. We say you gotta pull a permit and you have to have one acre or a half acre.
Yeah, I just think if you want to start a hobby farm, maybe buying a house in the village is the place to buy. Like, you look at Isabelle County, it's owned agricultural for what, ninety percent of county? You can move ninety percent of county and have bees and chickens and horses and all that stuff, but if you live in the zone community.
Yeah.
We have design standards for pole barns, but we're gonna allow chickens, you know, it's just. We're, we're a zone community. That's the look and the feel that we've had here for a while and. Personally, I don't really care about chickens. It's just not the look and feel. Especially if I was out of town and this was my lake house and then the neighbors across the street got chickens. It's like. What kind of hellbilly stuff is this? You know, like, this people still.
Had some good money to.
Horrible, I had chickens.
Cheater. I guarantee if you lived in a, a high-end neighborhood.
Well, we, we got. Like Tim says, we got people interested in that. You've been kicking this around for like part of the year. Yeah.
I just wonder if we get rid of the waterfront option. Think it's depending on waterfront. When it says four or six and then cap. Which you can. You know, I mean, that limits the amount. It also limits it off of. The lake, which a lot of them sound like they're, it wouldn't meet the criteria anyways. Um and then limits, you know, camping. The amount, like it'd be like a lottery system even. You could even do a lottery system if you have more than. Apply.
Doing it.
And then, yeah, I would do it annually. And then review it as far as infraction.
Put this on a ballot, have people vote on it? Is this like a voting thing?
You'd have to have an ordinance drafted first that you'd be able to vote on.
Okay.
Oh, that's an idea.
And you already missed the deadline for this election.
Survey was misleading in my eyes. I mean, what was it, thirty-three percent said yes and thirty-three percent said no and then thirty-three percent undecided.
Well, thirty-three percent said yes if there are regulations.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, the, the survey was designed so that you either were yes, no, or. Could you live with it if we had rules? In two thirds of the community are fine or said, yeah, we can live with it with rules.
And we recognize you're in the other third.
I mean, well, we're also gonna tell.
Well, here's.
People with the highest taxable value homes were getting chickens, but you can't have. You know, like.
I wonder how many of those people would be like. I don't know, like, I can.
Yeah.
My neighbor. I have too many dogs that come to my.
My, my thing is the enforcement. We can hardly enforce people growing snakes in their garages. As we had incident a few years ago. How we couldn't enforce this? That, my thing is enforcement because it's fine and dandy. But thirty-six square feet or a six-by-six foot pen is not very big. And there's gonna be a lot of waste. And they have to dispose of it somehow.
But four chickens, though, it's not a lot. I mean, it's not like I'm holding.
More than you think.
Right, no, I know my son has chickens, thirty, so I know. But it's, it's not as much as, as if we allowed thirty chickens, that we have four or six, you know.
I understand.
Let me ask a dumb question. To get rid of the wakes, can you put in? Let me ask a dumb question and get rid of the waste. Can you put it in? The trash? I mean.
I don't know, Kings don't have to take it.
All that's what I'm thinking myself, the Kings, you know, if they're not gonna take it, how are they gonna get rid of it?
Well, that's, and how are we gonna regi- how are we going to enforce whatever we say?
Right.
They've got eight chickens.
I mean, I could take it out to the hunt camp, but.
Yes, I believe it can be thrown in the trash. I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Oh, you're probably, you're probably right.
People doing the dog stuff.
It's kitty litter, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, or diapers. I mean, you know. It's in a bag and in the trash.
Like the dog stuff, yeah.
Beal City Schools actually had a chicken coop for the last ten years and it did just burn down two years ago. But you never would know that there was fifteen chickens at the school.
Yes, but it impacts the school on fire.
Maybe they had a logging operation, there's all trees that are down and that starts on fire.
Nobody knew that there was chickens there. That's just not, I, it's like, um, they don't have to be free range, I guess is what, right? The people that are calling on the call, they're like, they wouldn't be free range, they wouldn't be roaming my yard.
Yeah.
That's what.
Well, they can't see, that's. Okay, Jim, why don't you, um.
But what about roosters?
Back to the point, Tim.
Here's my suggestion, if I could offer a, sure, why don't you have me draft something that has like an A, B, or C option on a lot of different. Right, so you can look at this and say, yes, we like A, yes, we like B, and that there's, you can. Put something together that is agreeable, move forward.
Yep.
Alright.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And we will have, once we agree on something like that, like I'm all about drafting an ordinance and. You put it out there for public comment and stuff and we can have a public hearing and people can come here and I, I think. More people need to spread their voice, like.
Yep.
We can beat a dead horse in here, we all know the issues and everybody has their ways, so. Us talking about it doesn't matter. I'm all about, you know, we can put a policy together and we'll put it out there and see what the people say.
Yep.
And then.
Yep, we'll go from there.
You can take the feedback from the crowd, what you wanna do and vote however you wanna vote.
Yep. I think so, cause you're multiple choice or.
Cause there's not much.
Well, there's not a. I think you keep them separate.
Two separate A and B, ordinance A and B.
It's easy for me to say, got ten going, you know. You've got a lot of others.
Okay. Good with that, folks?
Alright, let's go to fire coverage contract.
You have in your packet a proposed contract for renewing our fire coverage to our friends with. It is the one mil taxable value of Brumfield Township in the village, which is what Sherman Township pays, they pay it to the township. We act as a pass through on dollars because it needs a special assessment to ensure that fire coverage is provided. There as opposed to from Cleveland and Venus.
The same one we've been doing.
It's the same one we've been doing. Dollar amounts are different every year, but everything else is not.
Right. And. It costs less in taxes than it does, you get that much off on your insurance. Alright. By understanding proposal, we've done it many, many times. Is there a motion?
Any motion that will accept twenty-four, twenty-five American contracts?
Motion made by PV to accept the twenty-four, twenty-five fire contract. Township seconded by Berenger. Discussion. Seeing. Go call please.
Robert Laraway.
Yeah.
Brad Peavy.
Yes.
Joe Shannon, yes. Terry Berenger, yes. Val Cooney.
Yes.
Introduce.
Yes, six zero, pass. Cityhood discussion.
So following on the heels of last month's presentation, where we discussed the potential. Process that would involve pursuing status as a city as opposed to a village, uh the next step in this process, if council wishes to move forward. Would be authorization for me to contact state of Michigan to begin the petition process. And also to solicit proposal from Row um for the mapping and legal description requirements. Um I would specifically stay with Row on this project because they were the ones that did. This is the first time they have the map of the village already done. Um there is going to be a couple of. Points, I think, in the legal description that have to be cleaned up. Um as I researched the history on the charter, there was. An amendment that I'm not sure if it was actually done the. Way you're supposed to that address the islands in the river as part of our boundary. Um, that's an annexation issue that would involve a certain process that. It's, it's insignificant because it really doesn't have any jurisdictional things, but if we're going to. Do the boundaries correctly, we need to have the legal description, I think. Make sure that that is adequate, adequately included, because right now the legal description just says islands in the river, it's like.
There weren't any.
There, there weren't, you know, like.
And all, and all future islands.
Like, if you ever seen a map of the Mississippi, there's state line here, cause the river was here, the river's over here, the hat of guys, like, so. Um in terms of. A little bit tighter numbers for the council to consider for both us and unfortunately the townships. Uh assuming that we were to move forward with a charter that had a restrictive tax cap of two mills. So right now we have one mill that heavily has rolled back, those are the, the ninety-four tax laws that was mentioned earlier. Um we're, we're knocked back to eight tenths of a mill. So if we were to get our one mill restored, that's a, a net bump of about twenty thousand dollars. Uh if we were to capture one additional mill, it's currently going to the townships. That would be a hundred and nine thousand, that's our current taxable value. And then if we were to charge the one percent admin fee for the collection of property taxes for other entities. That's twenty-five thousand roughly, those are conservative numbers. The added cost would be assessing services, so that's why you get to do that one percent to offset that additional charge you're doing to. Um collect and, and build those properties. A second tax billing. Uh we would, we realistically would need to bring out a part-time position to help with the added tax um billing and processing. Um, it, it's been, it's been pretty cumbersome in the last week or so, especially with everything coming in. And I kind of streamlined out the election cost average, so you're, you're typically gonna have a big year and a low year, but to. To give you a flat number, it's about fifteen is what I worked off of. So your net income or your net positive statement is gonna be seventy-one thousand dollars conservatively. If we were to go that route and if that was the charter impact. We currently collect a third of a mill for dedicated road patrols. You could let that military tire pay for that service completely out of that net. And still come ahead, you know, thirty plus thousand easily in this scenario. Uh townships, well, that hundred and nine is coming out of the townships because right now they collect one mill. And if we become a city, they would no longer have that taxable value within their jurisdiction. So Sherman Township would see a reduction of sixty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight based on this year's taxable value. Um but there is an offset to that because they don't have to pay the assessor to assess any of those properties. And at fifteen dollars a parcel, which is the current rate. Um, that's a twenty-two thousand dollar and change savings on their part, so their net impact. Is a forty-one thousand dollar reduction. Brumfield slightly less because they have a lower taxable value, lesser parcels, uh thirty-four thousand and change. Um collectively, it's just over seventy-five thousand dollars. Um this is going to be obviously the, the biggest point of contention as we move forward is the impact on the townships. Um, you know, the, the reality is, I think quite candidly that. Uh our residents are, are paying out more than they are receiving back based on the, the services that are being divided at this point in time. So if we were to go forward, uh those are the two things that I would ask you to authorize. And I would also ask that you would um direct me to begin discussions at townships to give them a head up that we are seriously pursuing this. Um we are aware of the impact and, you know, we are not looking to pull the other trigger, which is. The law talks about a return of assets to the village from the township based on the taxable value split. Um I would, I would strongly recommend us to not pursue that just because, you know, we don't, we don't wanna be bad neighbors in this process by frankly, so.
We're gonna have fire protection.
Fire protection, you know, is one that we're gonna need to talk to Nadal Sherman about, because that's. You know, that taxing is going to come out of that village, cause it's a township village, so. As long as we can still maintain that one mill with the township, I would think that they would be alright with that because. That wouldn't have a financial impact on the fire department, and that's a separate entity, it's a joint entity of those two townships.
So that motion that we just passed, would it save the Brumfield Township people money?
No, no, it's still one mill.
But don't they pay it towards uh Brumfield when they pay an additional mill to Sherman? It's not an extra mill?
No, they paid the one mill to also be paid the township, correct, so.
I don't think so, to pay it to.
No, they're still paying, they're still paying one mill in property taxes. In Brumfield Township, same in Sherman, but Sherman has an additional one mil property tax on fire. We're doing an additional one mil special assessment here on the Brumfield side.
So we would get rid of that special assessment or we would?
Well, as we talked at last month's meeting, I think we would have to do a special assessment village wide to start off, because. If you go down this road and you do incorporate, you're gonna need to have. Yeah, voter approval to do a, a taxing issue like that, so you're gonna have to wait till that next election cycle to do that. That interim gap, you're gonna need to do the one mil assessment, but do it village wide at that point in time.
But eventually get to it.
You can eventually then go right to the voters on that, because now, the reason why we have to do it this way is the split jurisdictional issue.
Right.
So Sherman Township, all the, the village residents on the Sherman Township side of the equation. They're, they're voting and paying to Sherman Township, where our Brumfield Township side is not. And the Michigan constitution requires that taxes are levied in a uniform manner across your jurisdiction, so. You can't create a voter approved taxation district there that is not village wide. That's what the special assessment process is for. And there's pros and cons in that approach, where, you know, if it's an election, only registered voters get to vote in that decision. For our special assessment, all property owners get an equal say in that process, whether you actually are a voting member of the community or not, so. There, you know, there's pros and cons each way you look at it. Um either way, you're gonna have somebody that doesn't get to participate either because they're not a property owner or they're not a voter, so.
Um personally, I'd like to see it that we, we adopt that, that we have a special assessment in the beginning, but telling people that we will. Put it to a vote because it, if they turn it down, they don't get fired, that, I mean, fired.
Yeah, that's on them.
Yeah, that's bad. Any.
Yeah, I think I, are we okay with letting Tim go ahead with that and getting the petitions? Starting the process and then I'll come back with whatever Rose proposes for you guys to. Alright, sounds good.
Um, you know, I never thought you'd hear me say that.
New business. Wall of honor. There's a list of, uh, go ahead, Tim.
Everything's in the packet.
Yep, there's a list of things that are there that, uh, for the wall of honor that we've had. And the only one that seems to fit those criteria cur- currently is Charles Keel. Yep, cause he's been a council member and a village treasurer from two thousand four to two thousand twenty-three, lots of things. Mover and shaker on fireworks, too. So.
That's significant for the fireworks, yeah.
Well, I, I moved that one. Move ahead and put Charlie on that.
Yeah, motion made by Cooney to. Put Charlie Keel on the wall of honor, seconded by PV. Discussion. Seeing none.
Just that he's done a great job.
Yep, in favor, say aye.
On a aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, radar speed sign purchase.
At last month's meeting, uh the council approved a traffic control order to reduce the speed limit on. Lookhouse Drive between Fairway and Birdie, to twenty-five miles per hour, leave those purchase so signs, I will be getting them in in the near future. Um part of that discussion was, you know, what would it take to also get a radar sign that we could. Put around the village, move it, um. And uh went out and got prices from three different sources, one of them being Amazon. Um all traffic solutions is a vendor that we have used in the past, it is who our traffic counter gets brought. Um, that's worked fantastically, um I would, uh if we're gonna do that, I would definitely recommend staying with them. Um what I. What I priced out is, uh you've got some solar options, those are the more expensive one. The, the less expensive is a battery only one, which is what our traffic counter is. Um and we just plug it in and like four hours it's charged and. This time of year, the battery will last twelve to fourteen days and the winter is, you know, eight to ten. Um so we, we can pluck that guy out there and. Take it out after a week, um or two, depending on the season. And, you know, we've got traffic data on a lot of our streets out of over currently doing. Um I think this would add a, a nice layer to what we do in that you could track before and after. Um data to see, you know, what, what type of impact, if anything, that is going to have long term. Uh data does suggest that when you put a radar sign out, you do see a correction from north of sixty percent of the drivers and it's up to. Twenty percent of their speed. Um and you do see an overall better compliance with the speed limit when these are out in display. Um and for a brief period thereafter. Um so I, I definitely think for the cost, it would be a wise thing to, to add to our toolbox in terms of what we do with our streets.
Yeah, does that mount right on the sign like that?
They could that, yeah, or um we would probably do the same thing we do with the other one, which is on a, a post that where it's easier to move for us.
But we'll be posted near the sign, cause one of the big questions my wife asks, she says. Okay, where's the speed limit signs? I, I don't even know where they're at.
Yeah, so that's actually an interesting point. So one of the things we've been working on um is mapping. All of our sign locations in the village, not just speed, but stop and ye, all, all the signs and. Um, you know, we, we probably could do with some more speed limit signs on our major streets especially is, is what it's looking like, and a lot of them. Are ones that we should replace anyways based on the reflective, you know, lack of reflective danger that they've had over, over the years, so. Um I definitely don't wanna make it look like the Lincoln Road parking signage, you know, south of McDonald's there, but. I, I definitely think some additional signage would not be harmful when it comes to speed limits on the majors and. Maybe a few spots on, on our locals, you know, put the twenty-fives up, you know, on a few spots just to, you know, emphasize that point, but. I mean, and probably some deer crossing signs. Could use a few of those, I think.
No, we could do hitchhiking.
Yeah, they stop and wave.
I'm not kidding, you know how they put like four miles, I'm gonna put everywhere.
Ten generation.
Uh the battery part ones, can you buy an extra battery, just swap batteries?
No, because it's a sealed unit, so if you break that seal, it was, it was a warranty on it. Um it, it's, it plugs in and it charges four hours.
Oh, and you think those batteries last, because if the battery goes bad, then.
Sure.
It's the end of the.
Yeah, we haven't seen, we've had the traffic counter now for two years, we, we've not noticed any type of decline whatsoever, really the only. Performance difference is if it's summer or winter.
Yeah.
And you know, the, and the nice thing about our, our machine is we can use it year round where. The, the road commission and the city, they use the two counters, so you. Once you start plowing, you can't use those anymore, cause you're gonna plow it all up where. You know, the road commission has asked if they could use ours in the past in the winter for, for a project and. Yeah, you can stick it in and you get all the data you want, even if you're plowing, so.
What's the warranty on?
Oh.
Probably a couple of years.
Yeah. Three year warranty, three, three. Same with the solar one.
I think you're very familiar with all traffic stations, I mean, you know.
Unauthorized person.
Okay, so. We, uh, we're ready? For the question, so we need a motion. Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Laraway to purchase the speed sign. Capco Safe Place Revolution Evolution. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Seconded by Berenger. For the discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Brad Peavy.
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Terry Berenger, yes. Paul Cooney.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yeah.
Dave Turrison.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, liaison committee.
So the village and L I P O A have long maintained a liaison committee. We have not met since January of twenty three, um, mainly because two organizations have been meeting, but. With the Joint Lake Restoration Committee and, uh, there are. Um, other areas in in terms of community activity projects that. Um, you know, we should probably get together and and meet again, uh, we have an agreement in place. Going back many years that, you know, supposed to meet quarterly with the next one being the fourth Monday in October at nine AM. Um. You know, um, this last week, council member Berenger and myself attended the N M L convention. And, uh, of the sessions we attended, there was really a a very good, positive one about. Um, like the Good Neighbor Program, Good Neighbor Day, um, and in ways to encourage. Social interaction and engagement on neighbors and intercommunity and, um. You know, those are areas that we have not been. Too hands-on because we've always kinda said, you know, if you're gonna do this association, that's great, cause you know, you you could, um. But is it something that, are they okay with us maybe taking a more forward role in terms of some type of community events or type of activities just to. You know, increase. You know, engagement in our neighborhoods, um. Carrie, I don't know if you wanted to add to it some more.
Um. Yeah, they were just, um, one of the big parts they were discussing was the changes over time on people who know. Have a good relationship with their neighbor and like. It was in forty or fifty years, it was about eighty percent and now it's like twenty. And the correct, the criteria that people chose. That, uh. Said, you know, things that they appreciate in their neighbor was to leave them alone. To be quiet.
It's all age related, I think.
The younger, you know, like most people don't even answer their their door, um. So there's, they're trying to reverse this because that's your community and that's kind of your lifeline. And, you know, um, and like sort of sense like COVID, um, you know, who can't leave, who's gonna come help you? Um, and so they did a lot of, um. Work on, you know, figuring out like, kind of how the best, like. Encourage and it is like an active role on being a good neighbor and it's the best way they found it's slow and slow, like don't push it, but. You know, be out there and and introduce yourself and try to get to know people so that you have a stronger community. Um, and to get people more involved and they found that there was over time a lot more buy-in. Where they would do, um, neighbor to neighbor, um, driveway meetups and they said the first one had five people and by the. Sixth one, there was like seventy people. Um, and people really just started to get to know each other and form a better community than one and get more involved. Um. So, yeah, it just seemed like a really good, like, um, I can kind of feel the, you know, the current times. It's pretty, you know, I know my neighbors, um, and like now one is a full-time resident, she and both of them. Used to be part-time or sometimes I wouldn't say for a year, but, um, you know, I've worked on trying to develop. That relationship and I think, um, you know, there's a lot of benefit. Um, especially to, you know, fostering community relations and getting people involved and understanding like. Uh, what they want and where they're coming.
One of the things in the past, I think that's really a nice idea, is to, we use the perks. To have our get togethers, you know. Cause we have a lot.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, uh, I think, um. You know, that like there's, I've noticed a a big jump in, um, you know, new young families and especially in my neighborhood. Um, you know, just with new people moving in or new builds, there's a lot more children, um. My husband and I participated in trick or treat last year, cause our children are finally kind of old enough. And it was pretty booming, there was, you know, golf carts pulling trains of children and. Um, you know, until it started snowing, everybody was out. Um, but yeah, there's a lot of things that, you know, we could, um, do that I think, you know, um, that. That, uh, that clientele would might would appreciate as far as, you know, not having to go into town to see Christmas lights or Halloween decorations. Things like that, um, and you know, and it's not, you you know, it's all just, uh. You know, trying to make it a bit more fun and and get people to, you know, just start communicating a bit more.
Okay, well, that's good, um. Paul, I've got a suggestion, since you're going to be gone, some of the times would you? Um. Become an alternate to that committee, committee, and then Carrie could be, cause she's here all the time.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that at all.
So let's do that. And then Paul.
I'm out, yeah.
You can, uh, then you, then you could be the alternate. And that way you still be there, but.
Yeah.
Since you're not gonna be here all the time.
No, I I completely understand that, completely understand, so at the next meeting. I can make it, but yeah, you can, it's no, but I mean, it's kind of dumb for me to go, you know.
You have to go for me.
Oh, for you?
Cause you're not gonna be here.
I can't be here on the twenty eighth, so we. Perfect, thank you.
Alright. So let the, let the, uh, record show that, Tim. Okay?
That's true.
Alright, thank you. Put in nice words, don't say fired.
Oh, come on.
It's been replaced.
Alright.
So are we setting that up, I am setting it up though, okay, I'll put it in there, I can't. I have to turn my phone off to stop that, I turned the sound all the way down. I can't get that stupid.
Okay, this is the portion for public comment, uh, second public comment of the day, and let's. Let's have the name and address for the record, please.
Go ahead. I'm David Whitman. Uh, I only want, uh, uh, sorry, I was about to ask extra. And, um, I just came up here to remind everybody that actually the survey. About the chickens and bees was very popular and it was put out by you guys. And I would like to say that it's more than just eating a hillbilly. Um, the average chicken coop would be about the size of these two tables, that's each other, the whole four chickens where people. Families could get organic eggs all of the time and teach their children responsibility. Now, I have talked to endless people in this neighborhood to support this, whether they are college professors. School teachers, you know, guys who work on garden for a living. All of them that I have talked to myself have been in favor of this. And I just really wanted to come up here after hearing what I heard today and remind everybody with this man called his constituents hillbillies for trying to feed their family. Organic food and teach their kids responding to candy and something that you guys probably wouldn't even see in somebody else's yard. And that was unbelievable, I mean, this this great gentleman here was up here talking about being able to get his food, you know, people getting their food. Within a hundred mile, there's no substitute for eggs and if you look at education. For the brain power that eggs bring to a family. And the amount of just nutrients that they can bring out of a small area like that, there is no reason. That anybody with an acre or a half acre should not be able to do it. And then just a small though, bees are incredibly important, incredibly important for the whole environment as a whole. And small bee box can be had, literally, you're talking a cubic foot. And they can re- give honey to a family, teach responsibility to our kids, there is a younger generation in here now. And there is a lot of this neighborhood, this younger generation, and most of us support these types of things. So I just wanted to say one last time. You you kind of called us hillbillies, bro, that wasn't cool. And I I would like you to think about that, because that's the truth of the matter. We're trying to teach our kids responsibility and have good nutrients for our kids. There's plenty of them and most of them are college teachers, there's a lot of college teachers and school teachers in this state, but I give more of them and. They're all for it, man, it's wasn't cool.
Thank you, okay, appreciate hearing you. Any other comments? Okay, council, nothing? Okay, announcements, let's see, next, uh, twenty eighth is liaison committee.
Of October, yeah.
Of October. And council is.
The seventeenth.
Fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
Will that meeting be here or?
We stand adjourned?